Hello and welcome, everybody, to the May 1st meeting of the Amherst Planning Board. Tonight's first item on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes of April 17th, 2013. I have a minor change on page three. This is under the fraternity residence dimensions discussion. Prior to Mr. O'Keefe moved to close the public hearing, should read, "There was no public comment." I think. If not, could we have a motion to approve these minutes, please?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. That's everybody. We have our town manager, John Musanti, here tonight to talk with us about warrant article number 26, Town Gown Strategic Planning. Mr. Musanti, welcome.
Great, thank you. Thanks for having me. Want to spend just a couple of minutes briefly reviewing what we want to accomplish in, under Article 26, which is before the May 6th town meeting. This is a request for the town to appropriate $30,000 to work on a joint consulting effort with the University of Massachusetts, looking at town gown issues. And this would be a joint effort. The university would also put up $30,000 toward this effort. And this comes out of conversations, multiple conversations, that the chancellor and I have had. You know, I think we have a strong relationship town and gown, and I think it's getting stronger. But this is an area that's been identified. The chancellor suggested this approach at one of our recent meetings. And the consultant would be used to really look at key community development issues, looking at housing issues, looking at housing stressors, looking at boundary neighborhoods, and also look at economic development issues. The effort is informed by the excellent work that's been done on the town master plan and the university's own master plan. And there was collaboration between us during that effort. And so this is a relatively modest request for funding. Next steps would be to really flesh out a detailed scope of services and get on with it. We hope the, well, our desire is that the study would result in specific action steps recommended, both short term and long term, or areas for some further study. So we think it has a lot of potential. And, you know, we'll be seeking town meeting support for this article. I have asked the chancellor to attend town meeting and speak along with town leaders on this article, and he has readily agreed to do that, which we're thrilled. So there's likely to be a procedural motion on night one, you know, scheduling Article 26 for a specific evening. But we're still working out those details. But it'll be great to have the chancellor come and speak to Amherst Town Meeting directly and allow us to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Musanti. Is this, so this is town-wide? It doesn't relate to a particular geographic area in town?
No, it's not limited to a specific geographic area. But when we look at things like housing issues and, you know, universities' growth, growth planning, et cetera, there's certainly issues related to, you know, neighborhoods closest to the campus. So looking at housing stressors, it's not just housing supply, but it's, you know, some of the other public safety and other issues, you know.
Economic development as well?
Economic development as well. And what, you know, a further exploration, what Amherst opportunities there might be.
Thank you, Mr. Musanti.
Sure.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Rosnoy.
Thank you, Mr. Musanti, for coming in and explaining this to us. I'm a little curious about the wording of the article. I think the, I don't have the article in front of me, but the wording of it, I think, says, "For the university and the town to work together with town staff in these development strategies."
Yep.
And I'm a little concerned that this hasn't come before the planning board earlier. I appreciate the fact that it needs some leadership, and that you have taken the initiative to do this is terrific, and that the university is enthusiastic is terrific. And I think, overall, it's generally a wonderful project. Thank you, Chris. Yeah, the wording is, "To see if the town will appropriate $30,000 from free cash, et cetera, et cetera, for a town gown strategic planning study in partnership with the University of Massachusetts Amherst." I thought there was some language in there about town staff being involved. And I think that this board is called the planning board, and it would be nice if there were some way to get us involved in this project. So I just hope that that's an outcome of your discussions with the university.
That's entirely appropriate and consistent with my thinking. So I would, my intention would be to involve the planning board, you know, at appropriate steps along the way, along with town staff.
Thank you. Mr. Schreiber.
I'm just curious, because there's multiple gowns, and actually, multiple towns, that, and I know that a journey of a thousand miles starts with Article 26, but is there any discussion of involving, say, the town of Hadley or the other two campuses within Amherst in?
Not in this particular study, but certainly that's part of the, you know, the ongoing conversation. Because many of the issues have, you know, similar impacts.
Yes, Mr. Carson.
Could this study also involve something we've talked about a lot, and the public is interested in, which is trying to find some place in town for private student housing, or private student housing on the campus itself, if that can be arranged through some kind of land transfer to the town, or something like that?
Housing stressors, I think, is how I diplomatically described it. That will include, you know, some discussion about, you know, taxable student housing.
I think this is a great initiative, because we've spent a lot of time here mulling over related issues, and I think if this is going to give us some forward motion on the housing and economic development issues as they relate between the university and the town, that's great. A couple of comments, though. One is, my own perspective is, I hope that this has a kind of process or facilitation aspect, and isn't just seen as a data-driven project. I'm not saying that that's how you've described it, but I think we have a lot of data, and I think there may be
Yep.
some need for more, but I, I think, not just this board, but the public wants to know that it can be involved, and that there will be directed conversations and participation. So that's one thing. And then, just from a couple of meetings I've been in recently, including my town meeting, precinct meeting, this came up. And some of the comments, and these are not my own, but somebody asked, "Can't we do this ourselves? Why do we need a consultant?" So if that can be addressed, as this is presented
Sure.
to the public, to, you know, "Have we done this already? Why can't we do it ourselves?" And then, again, concern that there might not be room for citizen involvement.
I've heard that similar feedback about opportunities for citizen involvement, and that will be part of our discussion as we flesh out a scope of services. You're right, there already is substantial amounts of good data, including most recently, and you'll hear about that in more detail tonight, on the housing production plan, and, you know, the housing market analysis is, that process has begun, thankfully. And so I think that's, those are all good, good suggestions.
All right. I thank you so much for coming in.
Sure.
I'm really happy to hear that you've, that you're in dialogue with
Yeah.
Mr. Swami about what, about relations. And, I mean, that's so important, and I would, I'm really glad that you've put an article on the warrant to try and devote some, you know, kind of put our money where our mouth is, as far as negotiating and trying to work things out with the university. So I would be in favor of the planning board taking a vote to support this article at town meeting. Mr. Crowner?
I also think it's a great idea, and I think it's, good things can come out of this, but I'm, I am, I'm not so sure that it's a good idea for the planning board to take a position. Every
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
I'm not so sure it's a good idea for us to take a position. Every study that comes down the road is, is a reason to delay doing anything. And so I don't want to be a part of that. I want, I think, I think our articles this year and in the past stand on their own, and they don't need another study. So I don't want to, I don't want to say, "Let's do this study, and then we'll decide whether we need, need any of this stuff." So.
Thank you, Mr. Crowner. Did you want to respond to that?
I think there are a lot of people who agree with the concept that we don't want to have paralysis by analysis. This is not meant to slow things down. This is meant to provide for momentum, and the chancellor and I have been very candid with each other that neither of us are big, huge fans of consultants. No offense to the consulting industry, but we want a focus on actionable recommendations. So, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Crowner.
But those actions, those recommendations won't come before our articles come for a vote, and that's, that's what I'm concerned about. Not, not, not the, not the study at all. I think it's a
Yeah, no, I get it.
Thank you, Mr. Crowner. Ms. Kruger.
Well, I understand that point of view, and I certainly wouldn't want this to be another sort of nail in our foot, or something like, probably a bad metaphor. But I would, I can't speak and make a motion, so I'm going to make a motion, and then we can have discussion if we get a second. So I would move that the planning board recommend approval of warrant article 26, Town Gown Strategic Planning, to town meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Well, I do, I think that some people will maybe grab on this as another reason to wait, which I don't agree with. But I think because it's a strategic planning article, it's important that we weigh in, and that we were consulted, and asked our opinion, and that this fits with our own vision and agenda for planning efforts in the town of Amherst. It's a huge set of issues we deal with, and I'm not sure it's so directly related to something that we're bringing right now to town meeting. If it were, if we were maybe doing something right in the, that most impacted set of neighborhoods, yes, but we're kind of off impacting other places right now.
Mr. Crowner.
If Ms. Kruger will make that statement on Fall Town Meeting with our recommendation, I'd be happy to support that. That's well said, I think.
If I can be there that night, because I can't absolutely control the timing of everything, if I'm there, I will. If I get called on.
If necessary, I'll quote it back verbatim myself.
Oh, you got that one down.
I, I think that every, I mean, I just really see it as a move in the right direction. Is there any more discussion about this?
I guess I would, I guess I would feel better if, if our motion included some directive for the town to include the planning board, and, and be directly involved, and integrate this study into our, into our efforts toward planning for the entire town.
Ms. Kruger, it's your motion.
But I don't, I don't sense that there's
I'm not willing to amend, but I think in that spirit, I am willing to trust that that message has been delivered to our chief executive officer for the town.
Is there any further discussion on this motion? All right. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Rosnoy abstaining. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And we're in support. Thank you so much. Okay. Our next agenda item is zoning amendments, last-minute issues. Mr. Tucker.
Thank you. As we have gone through the process with town council, and met to review the warrant and its motions and so forth, a number of things have come up. They are, for the most part, they're in one case very minor, and in another case, they are confusing but necessary. Let's start with Article 30. We, only this last week got, finally, a response from the attorney general on the zoning articles that were adopted last fall, one of which was two sets of amendments, one by the planning board, approved by town meeting.
I'm going to stop you for one second. These, what we're talking about, this Article 30 should be on your desk. It wasn't in your packets.
Yes. And it has at the top, "Draft revised motion," when we get there. The upshot is that, in the process of making the final motions on the petitioner's article, the right language got up on the screen and was voted on by town meeting, but the written text of that was not transmitted to the town clerk in the right form. And so what the town clerk could certify and send to the attorney general was not what town meeting had passed. So, and partly, that was just a process problem. And what that did was to not only set up a confusion, but to set up a conflict between, which we were already trying to address, between the amendment that had been passed that was the planning board's amendment, and the effect of that, and the amendment pursued by the petitioners. The attorney general's response on this article contained their understanding of the sequence, and their final recommendation was, "Work with your town council to draft language to fix this at this town meeting." And our town council has indicated to us, what we would do is simply write a new motion, because there's nothing that any of this does that isn't within the scope of what's being proposed. And what the motion does is essentially go back to a point just prior to where the amendments occurred last fall, and then make all the changes that were intended to be made then, and are intended to be made now. What's in front of you is a draft. It's gone to town council. We have not yet gotten a response on this, but we think that this accomplishes that. This may change, if we get a response from town council, but the intent is to do what I described, that we would take the language that's, both the original language that was in there under condition number five, the changes that were imposed by both the planning board article and the petition article, and the subsequent very minor changes that we were attempting to make to the language this spring, and the resolution of the conflict, all of that together, and do it all at once as a new motion. And that's, that's where that's at. And that's what this draft attempts to do.
The text that's on here, before the bold and before the lined-out text, is the text prior to Fall Town Meeting or after?
It is the text of number five, the existing standard, prior to Fall Town Meeting. Then, the changes that were made by both the planning board and petitioner articles, both to that section five, which was renumbered as six, and to the new section 13, which is in there, are present. And then the changes that we are making now to resolve the conflicts and include all of those changes.
So, so my suggestion would be that, if we're going to put this before town meeting, then, if I was sitting there, I would want to know what it was that I voted on in the fall. I'd want to see that in comparison to this.
We could put that up there, and we could do a sequence, you know, follow the bouncing ball, kind of thing.
Yeah. Otherwise
I didn't prepare that for you this evening, because you've been through most of this. What we're doing is describing the, the overall effect, and what we think in this draft accomplishes that.
Mr. O'Keefe.
So my question is, in what way does the draft revised motion that's on our desks tonight differ from what's printed in the warrant?
He was trying to figure
Specifically, what has been revised? Why do we need a motion that differs than, from being able to say, "I move in terms of the article that's already printed in the warrant"? Because to my eye, they appear to be identical.
They do to me, too.
Yeah, they, one of the changes is, in the first sentence, one of the things that was lost in the translation from the petition article, which was the final action that was taken, was they did not change zoning board of appeals to special permit granting authority, whereas you had in your previous article. And because they didn't, effectively, that change did back. I mean, there's a whole, you can see why I didn't try and lead you through all of the different parts here. And part of my concern is, I mean, we'll try to do this as clearly as we can, but if we try and follow the bouncing ball the whole way, we are going to lose a majority of people in the room. They're not going to understand it, because there are so many different versions that are in play here. The best explanation is, I think, the simplest one, which is, this is, this takes us everywhere, everybody wanted to go in the end, and gets us there.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes, please, Mr. O'Keefe.
So, so just to push that point a little more strongly, though, I, to my eyes, I see nothing in, in the revised motion that's on our desks tonight that's different than what's printed in the warrant, beyond the formatting issues, the striking out the ZBA and the adding special permit granting authority, along with bolding, and shall require owner occupancy or resident manager, which is already in the warrant article. Is that a correct reading of this, or is there something substantive?
That is a correct reading of this. In the process of doing that, several things that occurred, including the petition articles, that occurred in the error, in the clerical error, are not included in this, and therefore don't end up in the certified version. The certified version, right now, is an amendment to the last sentence, or the last phrase of the last sentence, under
So, okay, so let me just jump in for a second.
Yeah.
The attorney general rejected the, well, no, the attorney general said, "This is not what town meeting voted on."
The attorney general approved what the town clerk had certified as happening, which includes language which is not in here, deliberately not in here.
So the warrant does not reflect the current status of the zoning bylaw?
Right.
The current status of the zoning bylaw is that section 13 was deleted, and that's it?
The current status of the zoning bylaw is that section 13 is there, and there's a different last sentence for, or last phrase of number six. And the change from five to six didn't occur, so there's an enumeration error in it. And, as we said, the zoning board of appeals
And so this has to go back before town meeting because of that?
Yes. To fix it.
Can't the town clerk just send the corrected?
We, we gave the town clerk all of the information. Town clerk is aware of what, what action town meeting took. But the town clerk cannot certify something that was not received by them in the right way. And because the things were changing up to the last minute, the petitioners made changes that they did not give to the town clerk.
So when you say that they, I'm sorry to push the issue, but you say that they received the wrong thing, that means that someone sent the wrong thing to the town clerk, from town meeting?
It was, had to do with the sequence. They were, town clerk, the last thing the town clerk was given was not the last thing that was done. Let's put it that way. There were, there were a number of amendments proposed, and not all of them, and not the last one, made it into the town clerk's hands.
So Mr. O'Keefe is the one who's been charged with presenting
I'm so happy about that.
Um, thank you for volunteering. I'm not, what I'm going to say is, we need to have a very clear compare version done for town meeting, and a clear explanation of what happened, in order to get this done, because it's confusing enough what we're trying to, that we're trying to resolve this conflict between these two articles that passed. And now, not only are we doing that, we have an error that was introduced in the process. So, Ms. Kruger?
I know that Mr. O'Keefe doesn't like to take, change the order of articles, but I wonder if this might be delayed till after we do some other zoning at town meeting, because this is a terrible thing to lead off with, and I sympathize with you having to present it, even though we sort of get it. It's just like, let's get everybody totally confused over some semantics and some historical eras that we think don't really mean that much, and then move on to things that we really care about in, in zoning amendments. And I wonder if maybe this could get, not be our, you know, starting batter of the whole thing.
Mr. O'Keefe?
I think that's a fabulous idea.
Do we need to recommend that this be referred back to the planning board, instead of trying to take a town meeting right away?
No, I, well, I would recommend not. Town council thinks that this will, not necessarily this version, but this will fix everything, and wants, and recommends going forward with that.
Your point is well-taken, Ms. Kruger, about the order of things. I can't see doing this first. They're going to think we're crazy.
But this is in ours.
Now, trust us. Spend a half an hour trying to stumble through.
Yes, Ms. Brestrop.
I understand that another reason to not refer this back and delay this vote by town meeting is that projects are coming before the ZBA that need to have a clarification on this section of the bylaw, and without it, they won't be able to, the ZBA won't really be able to act appropriately on the applications.
Yes, we won't really have a settled bylaw. It'll be a bylaw with existing conflicts in it, if we don't change this.
All right. Well, would it be sufficient if Mr. O'Keefe and myself and Mr. Tucker work out how to handle this? And figure out some way to present it, and I think it should come out of order, if possible, whatever the procedure to do that in town meeting. Does that seem
It's simply a procedural motion. I move to consider Article 30 after Article 36, for instance, put it last.
All right. I see nodding heads, so I think that's what we'll do with this one. Okay, next is 31. Article 31, on the warrant, mixed-use building standards and conditions. According to your, yeah, go ahead.
No, you can go ahead and summarize it, if you would. The, a potential change came up, and we wanted to present it to you. I consulted with chair of the zoning subcommittee about this. Right now, what Article 31 would do in terms of the number of dwelling units, is it would establish a threshold of no more than 10 dwelling units on upper floors before you got to a special permit. The 11th unit would trigger a special permit. There, in the process, you were also amending things to make it possible to have ground floor units, but there is no corresponding limit, referring to those, to the number of units. There is instead a, an area limit of no more than 40% of the total area of the first floor being dedicated to residential uses, including stairs and elevators and so forth for the upper floors, and whatever you end up with for residential units, which probably would end up about 25% of the first floor. About a quarter of the first floor could be used for residential units if someone wanted to. There, there's nothing in here that obliges anyone to. On the other hand, there's no limit on that number, and there's been some concern expressed that this is, you know, a stealth way to bring in units without having to, to count them, and them and, and so forth. So, one of the potential solutions to that, if you decide to seek, seek a solution to that, is to instead take out the phrase in the second paragraph above the first floor, so that things will, uh, instead read, shall be required where, wherever proposed residential uses exceed 10 dwelling units, meaning in the entire building. One of the effects of that, and, uh, is to establish a consistent, simple rule for the whole building. A side effect is to run slightly counter to one, part of the intent of your amendment. The intent of the amendment was to allow for the possibility of smaller units. More units on the upper floor by right means more of them in the, in the building, the units themselves end up being slightly smaller. Uh, and that allows for a more diverse tenant population. If you count the ground floor units, you are, say, and example we, we ran was a building with 12 units in it, 10 on the upper floors and two on the, on the first floor. If you do away with the 10, if you change the rule, the threshold, and make it for 10 for all of that, you end up with bigger upper floor units, which was part of your intent not to do. It's not fatal, but it is, it is real. So, that's, and on the back of the page that we've given you, we had put together a, a sketch showing a ground floor on the lower half of the page, and a generic upper floor layout for second and third floors, since in the districts we're talking about, for the most part, you can't do more than three floors. If you were, in this case, limiting it to 10 units overall, then you would have no more than four units on, on a given upper floor, and those units would be larger.
Well, that's just if somebody decides not to go for a special permit, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. Part of the, um, context is all here. Nobody's tried.
Nobody's tried to.
Partly because the number has been so small, six units on upper floors. Three units to a floor is not a, an overwhelming or meaningful number economically, whereas 10 gets you closer to something that makes fiscal sense if you're gonna try and do it a, a new building.
And thank you, Mr. Tucker. I'm just gonna jump in for a second. Deleting that phrase above the first floor, that sort of, I think that brings that article more in line with what I thought we were voting on.
Yeah.
So, I'd be inclined to move, and say, direct that we move in terms of the article, except that the phrase above the first floor be deleted. Is anybody opposed to that? I think we oughta probably move that change, just to.
Somehow I see. No, I'm not actually in favor of that, but. Because I think one of the intents is to allow more units. And so, at one point, we were talking about 12 units, and we reduced that to, you know, to 10 minutes above the first floor. So, I think that we're further, basically diluting what the intent of this is, which is to allow a better ratio of housing to, basically to, uh, commercial in a mixed-use building. So, I think that it's true that it's not parallel language, that it's retreating the ground floor differently, different kind of language. I think that will sort itself out in the design process, and I think, I don't think we're talking about more than a couple of units in any case, so, I mean, I, I, I'd actually like to keep it the way we have it.
Ms. Brestrop?
I've heard discussion by townspeople, and I also went to a precinct meeting last night, and I think that people are confused about this, and they fear that there will be many units on the ground floor. They don't understand that, you know, the, that the 40% limits the amount pretty severely. They're imagining three units, four units. They don't have any sense of where it stops. So, I think that fear factor is really important in considering this potential change, and if you wanted to go to 10 units, I think you might be able to get there, but if you try to eliminate, um, not count the units on the first floor, I think people's imaginations will take over, and this will be defeated. That's just kind of what I heard.
Thank you, Ms. Brestrop. Ms. Kruger?
Thank you. I think that's why I will support the revision that we're talking about tonight, because I think, uh, while I might be comfortable with 12 or 13, then that should be the number. But having the number plus an unknown opens the door for, um, some, uh, people who might otherwise support this article would then not. I mean, the, the biggest touch point in new development is the density, and what's the density gonna be? And so, when, if we, if we pick a density that we think is right to stand by that and not this density or this unit number plus an unknown other uni, 'cause it, for, for the reasons that Ms. Brestrop articulated, so I, I support the change.
Ms. Ford?
Is it too late to change it back to 11 or 12 units?
Yes. Yeah, that would.
Because we'd have to go through another whole public hearing process if we did that.
Mr. Tucker?
Uh, it would require a conversation with the moderator, given that, the way things stand now, that the scope now allows ground floor units without numerical limitation, percentage limitation. He might find, uh, removal of the square footage, um, uh, well, actually, he might find it within the scope, uh, but we would have to talk to him to go back up to 12, for instance, for toe, as a total.
In conjunction with removing above the first floor? That's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He might. I can't guarantee that he would.
Okay. I'm gonna say again that I support this proposed change, that I think that the, the, I think that that's an, in my mind, I didn't notice that that was going to have that effect of allowing additional units on the first floor. I saw 10 dwelling units and thought, "That's how many per building." And that's what I thought I was voting on, so. Mr. O'Keefe?
So, I, I think that it's a fairly minor change, removing the, above the first floor. That's not gonna have too much of a practical impact, except in the most marginal of cases, and if it, it allays people's fears about potentially unlimited numbers of units on the ground floor, even though we all know, because we understand the mechanics of the article, that that's not practical anyway, people still bring their inherent fears into the process. And so, being able to categorically say that anything more than 10, regardless of how they're laid out, is gonna require a special permit, I think, as Ms. Kruger said, might be enough to, um, allay the fears of people who would be inclined to support the article.
And you could still go higher if you got a special permit?
Sure. It would, has always been the case.
Mr. Schreiber?
Just to follow up on Kathy's point, I think that there's no doubt, despite different readings of this, but I think there's no doubt that the intent of this was to allow 11 units. At least, you know, one on the ground floor plus 10 above the ground floor. So, you know, maybe that's just too much of a, a mess to, you know, to try to convince that to be within the scope, the moderator, that it's within the scope of the article, but that for sure was the intent, and that was what was explained at the public hearings.
Mr. Carson?
I, I agree with you, except that the figure 10 is written in here, and I, I can also see Jonathan's point and Chris's, that people are, are fearing now that there's something that's changed that they don't understand. And so, I would, I would be in favor of taking out above the first floor and leaving it as 10 total.
Yes, Mr. Rosnig?
Just a question. I'm wondering whether we've gone to the moderator about this change, and, because in a way, actually, it's quite substantive. I mean, it may be minor, according to the language that we change here and there, but in another, if you look at it from a different perspective, it's quite substantive.
I think that I can field this one, which is that we're actually reducing the scope of the article rather than expanding it, and that's allowed under the rules of town meeting. So, we don't need to ask the moderator if we are reducing the scope of the article. Is that?
I'll, I'll check with him anyway, but I agree, agree absolutely. I think it is within the scope.
Mr. Crowder?
I move that the planning board recommend the amended language for Article 31 to town meeting.
Second?
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Schreiber is abstaining. Everybody else is in favor. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Tucker, were there any other last-minute issues to address before we move to the housing production plan?
Not in terms of zoning, no.
Thank you. A lot of times, in terms of the zoning, we have taken public comment. At this time, however, I'm gonna hold public comment until after the housing production plan is presented. I believe we have Greg Stutzman and John Horneck here to speak to us about the housing production plan. Welcome.
Thank you. Jarrett?
Often I'm loud enough with that.
So, I'm Greg Stutzman, co-chair of the Housing and Sheltering Committee, and we're here tonight to present the completed housing production plan. Our committee was formed about a year ago, and since last August, we've been working with the consultants, Karen Sutter-Borg and Abacus Architects, on their housing production plan for the town of Amherst. I think some of the plan, if not all of it, was forwarded to all of you in your email ahead of this meeting. So, what we're looking for essentially is that the planning board and the select board adopt the plan. So, there, there's several phases to this plan, and right now, the plan has been completed, and the next step is for the local authorities, that would be you, the planning board, as well as the select board, to formally adopt the plan before it is submitted to the state for approval. And then the final step is certification. Approval by the state recognizes that the plan is complete, has all the parts required by law, and certification is when we actually meet the goals that we're stating in the plan, which are 48 affordable units per year, although that need not be strictly 48 per year. For instance, if 96 were fulfilled in a two-year period, we could be certified for that two-year period. So, the housing plan is made up of a few parts. We have the executive summary, needs assessments, and strategies for producing additional housing. And finally, there is a presentation, including design studies, of potential sites that could be developed in Amherst. And these are just totally imaginary sites, basically, and the point is for the planning board and other authorities to see what types of structures, design-wise, could be implemented to increase the affordable housing stock in town. So, in the needs assessment, as some of you may have read in the newspaper recently, some of the key findings were that over the last decade or so, the town has lost almost 40% of population age 25 to 44, and essentially, housing demand has far outstripped housing growth, and so there's a huge demand for housing in the town at the moment. Also, let me just thank Ms. Kruger, who's been our liaison and has been instrumental in the process, and knows a lot more about some of the data than we do, so we may defer to her at some points in the conversation. But we first wanted to see if the board had, had reviewed the plan, and if there were any specific questions. We don't want to take too much of your time.
Well, I think I, I'm gonna ask that we hold questions until we hear from you, unless somebody's got, um, I mean, we've all had the, we've had the, the plan since April 26th, when we get here, most about five days, so we've had a chance to sort of review it, but I think it would be helpful if you could elaborate a little more on your key findings, and, and with a particular focus on what to do about student housing.
What to do about student housing? Could you elaborate on that a little bit more? Because I'm sure you haven't talked about it enough.
Well, I'll just give you a little bit of background, which is that the, um, the planning board has been, it's been mentioned several times that the housing production study was underway, and one of the issues that's come before us repeatedly is the lack of housing. As you noticed, that, um, you, you mentioned that the demand for housing in Amherst has far outstripped the supply, especially over the last decade. And if you look at the charts in this study, you can see that the population rose while the level of housing essentially stayed flat or rose only slightly.
Right.
In comparison. And so, I assume what that means is that housing that would prefer, people who would prefer to live in Amherst are forced to live elsewhere.
Well, on that note, we do have another study underway, a housing market study, which looks more specifically at that issue, and we'll be looking for the planning board's involvement on that as well. The Housing and Sheltering Committee is working with RKG Associates on that study. But, yeah, you touched on the student housing issue, which of course is one of, if not the biggest issue in town at the moment, and so the consultants clearly noticed that when they were doing their data collection, that they just could not separate out student from non-student housing and, and the data relating there, too. So, some of the strategies proposed by the plan include specifically developing student-focused housing developments, but more specifically, we look at developing affordable housing in general. And one of the committee's key pieces of input to the plan was really honing down those strategies that were presented. So, we were given by the consultants, who have done, I think, somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 to 40 of these studies, a very comprehensive menu of strategies that the town could pursue to increase affordable housing. The committee appreciated all of those strategies, and they do remain in the plan. However, we reshuffled the priorities a bit to give emphasis to those strategies that we deemed the most actionable, if you will. And so, the committee's actually developed a draft work plan, which takes some of those strategies, the highest priority strategies, and expands on them. I believe we have a couple pages in the slides here outlining the strategies which the plan presents. Return to page 15, I believe. We find the ones that the Housing and Sheltering Committee deemed the most pressing. Those are strategies for years one through five. And again, these are broken out. It is, yeah. Should be page 15 in there.
Yeah. There are page numbers on it.
So, again, from this very comprehensive menu of options we were given by the consultants, the Housing and Sheltering Committee deemed those on page 15 the highest priority, and they're broken into categories by year, partly because the housing production plan requires that we state what strategies will produce the required number of units, again, 48 per year in the town. So, among the highest priority strategies that the Housing and Sheltering Committee identified were to establish and capitalize a municipal affordable housing trust fund, to modify the inclusionary zoning bylaw, as well as the supplemental apartment bylaw, to rezone, continue to rezone the village centers, easing restrictions on infill development, which was the topic of your, your last topic, I believe, in part, and to continue to make suitable public property available for affordable housing. Those are strategies for years one and two. Strategies for years three to five include monitoring and maintaining those existing subsidized housing inventory units, as well as funding housing rehab efforts. And the maintenance of subsidized housing units that exist in the town at the moment kind of brings us to another key point, which is that the town is approaching a threshold of being under 10% of its year-round housing stock in subsidized housing units. And if that threshold were passed, that would open up the potential for more 40B developments, and, which is one of the key, um, strategies, or one of the reasons for the housing production plan, is if it, if it is certified, if it is approved and then certified, the town has greater legal leverage in negotiating and potentially denying 40B developments, which might not be in keeping with the character of the town.
I see. So, just to, for those who might not know, a 40B development is a subsidized or low-income housing development.
Yeah.
So, part of building more subsidized housing is to allow us to prevent subsidized housing?
Well, the plan has, there's many reasons for the plan, and so, to have the data available so that the town can have a comprehensive strategy, that was one of the main reasons. And it made sense to seek this, this plan as opposed to another, because it also provided this, this tool for us to negotiate with developers. And I think Mr. Tucker might want to elaborate on that.
If I could.
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
40B is a process through state law whereby a comprehensive permit is evaluated and granted or not by the zoning Board of Appeals, and under that comprehensive permit, all zoning is waived. If the, if the community denies a comprehensive permit, and the community is under the 10% SHI threshold, then the developer can appeal to the state, and in the process, the town's denial of the, of the permit for a project, perhaps for very good reasons, can be overturned. And so, what this does is, having an approved housing production plan gives the town, under which the town is actively pursuing the production of affordable housing, gives the town protection against hostile, and in some cases, inappropriate, uh, Chapter 40B projects. Under, under a comprehensive permit, there's a minimum of 25% of the housing that must be affordable, but not all of it needs to be. So, there, there's a wide range of utility and appropriateness in, in 40B projects, and the town wants to be able to have some control over how they proceed and what they. able to have some control over how they proceed and what they contain.
Ms. Kruger?
Mr. Weber, you did pick up on one of the ironies of the housing production plan law, which is communities can use their production plan to not produce more affordable housing under 40B. But I think for Amherst, we've already had two 40B developments that the town embraced, but it was a way to create zoning flexibility. So I think it's more a 40B that might not be in keeping versus one that would be in align with our planning objectives. So we've gone on to use it, even though we're over the 10%, and used it quite constructively. It's in some ways easier than passing a zoning change to create some of the housing that you want. I just wanted to... Mr. Tucker, when you said all zoning is waived, in a 40B permit application, specific waivers are requested from the zoning bylaw. So usually, most of the permit application will comply with the existing bylaw wherever it can. And if there are a few key features that the developer needs a waiver on, those could be waived. So because I've heard citizens say, "Throw your zoning bylaw out the window."
That's not accurate. You're right. That's a better way to characterize it.
I understand from talking to Nate Malloy, who is the staff person for the Housing and Sheltering Committee, that we have a number of affordable units kind of in the pipeline, and they include the Olympia Oaks Project, which I think has 44 units, and then the Presidential Apartments, which has six units, and there may be another development, which I'm forgetting at the moment. But anyway, if this housing production plan is submitted to the state soon, then we will have the opportunity to count those 50 units that I mentioned, plus whatever else is in the pipeline, towards our 48 units per year. So the sooner this is approved by the planning board and the select board and submitted to the state, the better, as far as being able to count those units.
Yeah, and we've been told of that urgency also. And just while we're on the topic of adoption by the planning board and the select board, Ms. Breschek, I think there was perhaps a document sent over to you by Nate regarding a signature page? Because often when these plans are submitted, it'll just be the minutes of the governing body that say they took a motion to approve it. And Nate was going to prepare a signature page that would get us that ahead of the minutes?
Chair?
Mr. Weber?
Yes, Ms. Breschek, go ahead.
I spoke with Nate about that with Mr. Malloy, and the traditional way that the planning board issues decisions or sort of publicizes their vote is to issue a letter. And so I proposed to Mr. Malloy that the planning board or the staff, the planning staff, would issue a letter stating what the planning board's vote had been if you choose to vote on this. So in other words, like you approve a sign or a tree removal or whatever it is you approve, we write a letter stating that you've done that and what the vote is. If you think that's appropriate, that's what we would propose to do.
Thank you, Ms. Breschek. And as long as we're quoting Nate Malloy, he's... I'm reading from an email that we received from him, which says, "The adoption of the housing production plan by the town of Amherst and approval by the Department of Housing and Community Development does not compel the town to produce more affordable housing or increase its risk of liability or scrutiny. Rather, it is an acknowledgement that the content and format of the housing production plan meets the regulations." So I guess my question is, if we vote to adopt this, is there any downside? Yes, sir? Mr. Horneck?
It really isn't. I also wanted to come back briefly to, as I'm answering that, to something that you said earlier when you asked about students. When people think about students, we think about all of the behavior problems that occur in neighborhoods. But there is a second problem, which I focused on and which our group has focused on, that really is also present in the housing production plan. And that is, if we never had a nuisance or a behavior problem with a student ever again, students would still be a problem. They are taking over all of the housing in Amherst. That's a trend that's been happening for 20 years, and if we do nothing, it will continue. And the housing production plan gives us an opportunity to say, "We want a different future for Amherst." We don't want the town to be made up of students and people who are elderly, like myself. We want the town also to have young families. We want to have kids in school. That's part of the vibrancy of this community historically. And so if we say, "Okay, we really don't need this plan," we're really turning our back on that and simply allowing historical trends to continue. Now, I can't say that if you pass the plan or approve the plan, it's all going to turn around tomorrow. Obviously not. But as Mr. Stutzman said, the plan includes strategies for making changes. They include some of the kinds of strategies that you all have talked about, changes in zoning to increase greater density. When you add affordable housing, that is not housing that students are eligible to occupy by the nature of the law. So what the plan does, the upside, is that it acknowledges that we have a significant problem with the way this community has evolved over the last 20 years, and says we're going to figure out how to change it. And I think that's a very important statement for this community to be making. Now, what's the downside? Well, I don't think there's a downside of making it. I'm assuming that the people that I'm addressing all would agree that that's not a trend we want to see continue. As the email that you read from Mr. Malloy indicates, if we don't meet the goals of the plan, or if we don't implement all the strategies, the state is not going to impose a penalty. The penalty is on our community if we don't do those things. At least, that's my personal point of view, and I think I'm speaking for the Housing and Sheltering Committee when I say that. So the upside is, we're making a statement about where we want this community to be, and I really don't think there's a downside by approving this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Horneck. Well, well said. Any further comment from anyone?
I would just add in there, when Mr. Horneck was discussing the need and desire of the town to increase the diversity of the population, perhaps specifically in regards to what I had said about losing the 25- to 44-year-old demographic so drastically over the last decade, that we don't just need more housing, we need a certain type of housing. And so while some people might lament the loss of what are technically called single-family houses, when we look at what young families want and what empty nesters want to downsize, the plan states that we need more smaller housing. People are looking for smaller, more efficient housing than what's currently on the market. So while, you know, a single family with six bedrooms, you might call it a six family. You're not going to get a family in their 30s in there, most likely moving in who has one kid or two kids these days, is the trend that we've seen.
Mr. Kroner?
I think this is a really excellent report. I think it's... We've talked for the last six months or so about setting aside some time to talk about housing, and this is a great starting point. So I definitely want to approve the plan and adopt it into the master plan, if we can do both. But I don't want to stop there. I want to, you know, keep having the conversation. So I want to talk about a couple of things that stood out to me that I'd like to just voice, just to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly. So we have this... Some excerpts from the plan, and there's Table 1 in Page 3. And if I'm reading this correctly, for 50% AMI and below, our unmet need is about 1,000 units, not counting students. And the housing production plan is calling for or hoping for 200 units over five years. So that sounds to me like it would take 25 years to meet today's unmet need, assuming nothing else happens. So this is actually a very modest plan.
Well, it's interesting, because it's both modest and ambitious, and it's not in the sense that you're referring to, in that it only addresses a small part of the unmet need, but it's hugely ambitious in regards to, if you look at the production rate of affordable housing in the town and what we're actually trying to accomplish. So I would agree with your stand.
The committee really did discuss this issue, and the consultant's view was that you had to have the minimum that the state expects in the plan in order for it to be passable. On the other hand, the committee pressed the consultants to come up with their best estimates of the overall need, and so that's why this is in there. And I agree, it's very important to see that.
I have another one from the same table. The unmet need for people with disabilities is 2,200 units? That seems really high, and I'm surprised. And, you know, I'd like to know if there's anything in your short, long, medium-range dreams that would start to address that, not just including a unit here and there, but is there anything like to really make a dent in that?
Again, the demand hugely outstrips the supply. I mean, the committee has worked. In a couple instances, we recommended, for instance, with the presidential expansion, that an accessible unit be included in there, and we'll continue to work for that. But you're right, it's kind of daunting, the task of improving the accessible stock.
Also, disability includes not only people with physical disabilities, but with mental disabilities as well. And obviously, we do have some housing that serves those individuals now in our community, but those individuals need additional housing. The need isn't being met here or in the Commonwealth overall.
Well, yeah, that's well taken. I mean, I think that mentioning mental disabilities in the context of housing is extremely important in providing folks with... You know, I think a lot of us were in town when they closed the state hospitals and remember the people who no longer had a place to live because of their mental disabilities. I'm not surprised to see, at all, to see that there's this much unmet need for that. Mr. Kroner, did you have anything else? I don't want to take the floor away from you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I do have one more question, and that's one of the... One of the goals that you have... Let's see, where is it? It's in the one- and two-year implementation, modify inclusionary zoning bylaw to expedite permitting for affordable housing. Are you... Is your committee working on something that we can propose or that you will propose to town meeting in the near future?
What I should clarify is actually what we deem two strategies in there, and in the restructuring of the strategies, we're specifically now prioritizing modifying the inclusionary zoning bylaw, and to expedite the permitting process would be also a goal, but we separated out just the inclusionary zoning bylaw itself. And we had discussed with Ms. Kruger at a couple of the committee's meetings, the idea of discussing this and working on modifications to the bylaw with the planning board. And you've described this plan as a starting point, and we really hope that it is just that. And certainly, modifying the inclusionary zoning bylaw would be one thing that we'd look to the planning board for a lot of input from.
Thank you. Mr. Schreiber?
So I'm just trying to do the math on the people with disabilities. So I can't help but think there must be a decimal point somewhere. For one thing, just the housing production plan, you know, 25 units per year to meet... For five years, to meet 2,200 unmet needs, that's a very, very long time. But then also, the triple asterisk indicates that those 2,200 might also be covered under extremely low income or very low income. And those two together add up to 2,400. So there doesn't... It doesn't seem to be a... It says that it might be largely... That the 2,200 might be largely covered also under extremely low income.
I think all it means is there's an overlap in the two categories. You don't necessarily add them together.
Right.
You can't add up that column of unmet need and determine the total unmet need, because it's somewhat less than the total shown there, correct?
Just a comment on the 2,200 for the disabled category. If I'm recalling, and maybe both of you can help me, when the consultant talked about this at one of her public presentations, she said it was a very difficult number to really get, and relying on census data. But it's not a kind of field-tested number, so while we're pretty confident that there is a great need for more disabled housing, that may be a weak number to totally hang your hat on.
Right.
I mean, all of these numbers are estimates, and we pushed the consultants, as I said earlier, to do their best job in putting together estimates for us, because it's better to have an estimate, better to have a number than simply to know, "Oh, it's a very large number."
Well, we should also point out that the committee requested that the scope of the study be changed somewhat to include categories that may not have been in the study to begin with. So the disabled persons category came at the request of the committee, although there's no need under the state law to create housing specifically for that category.
Let's see. Yes, Mr. Rosnoy?
I'd like to commend you for a really excellent job here in your committee, and Ms. Kruger for her participation in it. And also, a wonderful presentation tonight and saving the town a few bucks so the consultant didn't have to come back. But I have a question about one particular detail not related to affordable housing. There's a passing reference to the fact that more than half the land in Amherst is not available for development because of conservation land and agricultural preservation. I'm wondering if there was a comparison with other towns like Amherst as to percentage of land that's reserved, and if this percentage is high for a town like Amherst?
I don't believe there was a comparison. I mean, we could go back and ask the consultant, because as Mr. Stutzman said, they've done 30 or 40 of these plans, so they may have looked at the same issue elsewhere. But I don't know offhand.
And we would be happy to walk away from this presentation with some questions, just like that, from the board to present to the consultants, because they couldn't be here tonight. So that's certainly something we can ask them.
Yeah, I'd be interested in knowing. I've heard numbers ranging from 63% to 53% or something that is reserved in Amherst. Do you happen to know actually what the percentage is? Maybe that's a follow-up question. But yeah, I'd be interested in that, what the actual percentage is in Amherst and how it compares with other university college towns.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rosnoy. Ms. Ford?
So I'm going to jump on the bandwagon and also say this is a great report. I have a question, and I'm really hearing what you're saying about this missing group... This, the gap that has been formed by housing not being available, smaller units for smaller families, for people that want to downsize, all that, not necessarily seniors, maybe, you know, a couple with one child. And so I see that this is being geared towards affordable housing, how to incorporate affordable housing into a kind of an emergency, emerging new stock. But what prevents... So where I'm seeing a bridge that could potentially be made, that I'm not seeing being made here, is how to create that housing and not have it be moved in, you know, how to not have students just take it over. So there's this, you know, there's this huge amount of students... You started off your presentation by saying, "Students are taking over." Well, how are they going to not keep taking over?
Well, I think the main...
As we continue to create this?
Yeah, I think the main issue is an imbalance in town, and certainly, we've seen for a long time, if we have two sides of the equation, student housing and that which the town more desires, there've been plenty of efforts to suppress the student housing, and there haven't been any efforts to keep up with growth for the other category. And you're certainly right, that whatever housing you build will be in part occupied by students, but is the town indefinitely going to wait for someone else to solve the problem of student pressure on the housing market to create anything?
So that's exactly right. That's a great question, and I... So it makes me question even, you know, the modest number that you are proposing. And, you know, maybe I need to hear a little bit more about why it's so challenging, you know, why it couldn't be even more.
When you say the modest number, you're referring to the 48 per year?
Yeah.
Well, again, that is affordable, and I should have clarified, it's in the material, that when we say affordable, we're talking big A affordable housing, which means the housing that is affordable to people who are making 80% of area median income and spend no more than 30% of their income on housing. So while the plan proposes to create that much housing that fits in that category, near inevitable upshot of that would be that housing that could be afforded by people in higher income brackets would be created also. It's just that this plan is made to suit the state requirements, which look at that very specific income category.
Yeah, so big A affordable housing, students are excluded from moving into. Small A affordable, for the other groups that we're talking about, students could move into, and the only solution to the problem, at least from my point of view, is to find other... other places for them to live. And, you know, whatever else you might think about the planned development in North Amherst, which I understand is gonna be quite controversial, at least it has the virtue of creating a place for, I don't know, 600, 700 students to live that takes them out of the main Amherst housing market.
Ms. Brestrop.
Oh, I just wanted to make the point that Mr. Horne just made, that once housing units are put on the subsidized housing inventory, they're not available for students, they're just available for people who fall into the category of below 80% of the area median income.
Thank you. All right, I'll, as long as there's a bandwagon, I will also jump on it. I think this is fantastic. I really learned a lot from reading the report. It's nice to have some hard numbers, and I understand, too, that this is just part one, right, because there's a market analysis coming as well.
They're related, they're not done by the same consultants. There was an RFP last spring that went out, and the town hoped to get both accomplished at once, and I think it took until early this year to get an accepted bid on the housing market study, which we plan, on that note, the Housing Shelter Committee plans, if you'd entertain us, to co-host the consultants that are working on that study, I think sometime in late May was the plan for that, but we'll certainly be in touch about the details.
All right, yeah, part one, part one and part two of what your committee is working on, rather than what the particular consultant.
But then there's part three, trying to implement all of these different strategies, which may be part three, four, and five, and undoubtedly, as Mr. Stutzman said earlier, that has to be done with collaboration between the planning board and our committee.
So that seems workable. I think the end of May will be after town meeting, so it'd probably be, my guess would be the first meeting in June, but, Mr. Tucker?
We hope to have some preliminary data from the consultants prior to town meeting, so that that can be included in the discussions with town meeting. I think the circle of conversation about how all of these things are tied together speaks also to the manager's effort with the university and the study there. We have, we will have this data, now what do we, also recommendations, but what do we do with it? How do we get from where we are to where we want to be? You have actually been making that effort for three or four years, or longer, through the farm-based zoning initially, through village center zoning, through looking at the existing zones and seeing what works better. I think there are elements of some of the earlier work that specifically addressed the question of the size of units by controlling the mix of bedroom sizes, things like that, the location of commercial uses versus residential uses in village centers. Much of this work has already been done. What we need to do is get over the hump, and hopefully, both the study that the manager is talking about, completion of the housing market study, will get us there.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Okay, is there anything else from the board? If not, I wonder if there's anyone from the public who's here to comment tonight on anything, including the housing production plan or any zoning?
The omnibus, public comment.
If there's public comment, please raise your hand. Yes, okay, I'll ask you to just give up the table for a little while, we may call you back up if there's questions for you, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Melissa Perro from Precinct One. I'd like to get on the bandwagon, I thought that was a very good report, and I think it's extremely helpful to the town, I think it connects very well with other studies that are being done, and that the need now seems to be to get this information coordinated and really worked on, and I think we're at that point now, and I hope we really will get something out of it. I think the gentleman here made some very good comments and, about the needs and how they can be met, how they can, can or cannot be used by students or whatever, and I think there's some very good information here, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perro. Anyone else? All right. Does anyone want to make a motion that we adopt this plan? Mr. Tucker, you can't make a motion.
I know. Interestingly enough, I don't want to. What I would just draw your attention to was Mr. Crowner's earlier comment, that I think it would be useful to have the motion include not only adoption of the housing production plan, but also its incorporation into the master plan, which is your responsibility as the planning board.
Is there anybody who doesn't feel comfortable with that, in terms of having reviewed this and the context? I wasn't anticipating making it a part of the master plan.
We have two motions.
Two motions. Mr. O'Keefe?
So just a comment on that, I don't disagree with the idea of incorporating it into the master plan, but we actually haven't changed the master plan at all in the several years since we've adopted it, and so I guess I would want to just maybe step a little bit more carefully there. I definitely wouldn't want to tie it to the board's adoption of this plan by itself, and I don't oppose incorporating it into the master plan, I just think that they should be separate.
Mr. O'Keefe?
I move that the planning board adopt the Town of Amherst Housing Production Plan dated March 2013.
Mr. Carson, Mr. O'Keefe, any further discussion on this motion? All in favor? That's unanimous? Thank you. Are there any further motions? Mr. Crowner?
I move that the planning board adopt the housing production plan, incorporate by reference to the master plan.
You? In other words-
Question, can I?
Yes.
Incorporate by reference or in the master plan or to the master plan?
Same difference, incorporate it as an element of the master plan.
Make it a part of, to use one-syllable words.
Would doing that require another public hearing, because that's a slightly different subject? No? Okay.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, I think unless there's a second, I don't think we can discuss the motion.
Second.
It has been seconded, Mr. Rosnoy. Mr. Crowner?
So what I'm saying is that we're not replacing the housing chapter with this, but it's part of, when we look at the master plan, it means that we're also looking at this.
So maybe you could elaborate a little bit more about your reasons for wanting to do this? Because it's, I mean, it's, I just, a lack of understanding of what you're trying to do.
The master plan is a series of goals and aspirations and beginnings of steps to accomplish the goals, to achieve the goals. The actual means of achieving the goals are going to be contained in other plans, they're gonna be contained in this plan for housing, they're gonna be contained hopefully in the transportation plan, if that ever happens, they're contained in the open space plan. So, so what, so if we incorporate this in the master plan, we're saying that one of the ways that we want to achieve the goals of the master plan with regard to housing or some other things possibly, is by following the steps that are included in the housing production plan.
I think that the reason why I'm hesitating on this is because making a statement and adopting it for the purposes of trying to qualify under these state regulations, to me, is very different from making it a part of, you know, every single sentence, making it a part of the master plan, which, the master plan went itself, underwent extensive public comment, it underwent, you know, changes by this board over the period of years before it was finally adopted, and that's not the case from this, so I'm just wondering, you know, is there some drawback to making it a part? Mr. Tucker?
The master plan currently includes by reference, specifically by chapter, many of the ancillary plans that, as Mr. Crowner was describing, are sort of the means by which we implement the larger goals and objectives, and in some cases, the strategies of the master plan, and this would be yet another of those. If the only time that we can do that is every five years, we're going to be taking actions based on plans that are outside the master plan. There's a certain need to maintain currency with what the town is deciding to do on a policy basis. This is the result of a public process. There was a consultant worked with a town board, the town board held public meetings, there was public input into it, and this is the result filtered from the consultant through the appointed town body, and it's before you, and you have decided to recommend its adoption by the town. I don't see an impediment in there to attaching it to and incorporating it into the master plan, it's been vetted. You don't have to do it twice, or three times, or wait five years in between times, at least in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Schreiber?
So I'm getting confused by what it is we're trying to do, because I absolutely support this as an ancillary or an appendix, or, you know, basically by reference, but then there was some discussion of that this be an element, to me, which to me means kind of a core, corpus of the master plan, but maybe I'm getting confused with the terminology, but to me, the elements are the main part of the master plan, and the ancillary are the reference documents, but I think it should be an ancillary, you know, in other words, a referred to, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Rosnoy?
I concur with both Mr. Tucker's and Mr. Weber's comments, which might sound contradictory, but let me try to explain. I'm, I agree with Mr. Tucker's approach that the master plan makes reference to all of these other documents in each and every chapter, and whether we officially integrate this study into the master plan, it will still exist as one of those referenced documents. And in the same way, I agree with Mr. Weber's comments about the fact that the master plan went through such a vetting process, through such a wide percentage of town. I'm hesitant to make it incorporated as an official part of the master plan, because in a way, this plan almost seems to stand above and beyond the master plan, it seems to be stronger in its own right, outside of the master plan, than it would be if it were incorporated into the body of the master plan or incorporated by reference as a part of it. I'm encouraged by the work of the board and that specific committee, and the strategies that are likely to ensue as a result of their work in getting all of us to work together. And I wouldn't like to see it just, I say just, become a part of the master plan, as if the master plan is something that's, you can say just the master plan, but, and as I say, in a way, I see it as greater than the master plan in its impact, if it stays separate.
Thank you, Mr. Rosnoy. Mr. O'Keefe?
So I fully support including it by reference in the master plan. My only concern is process-wise. I think, as I mentioned earlier, we haven't changed the master plan at all, and there is a wide range of schools of thought in the community in terms of the public process that went into the master plan, and so I'm really reluctant to set a precedent here for us in a meeting with no public notice, no public hearing, to change any element of the master plan, even though it's one that I personally support. I think there's not much reason to oppose it, although Mr. Rosnoy raises some relevant points, but I think it's a bad precedent for us to walk into a planning board meeting where we have an item on our agenda that has presentation and discussion of the housing production plan, and to walk out of that meeting having made changes to the master plan, even though it's a change that we think is innocuous and that we mostly agree with, I would have reservations about this board or some other board in the future doing that in some other way, whether it's adding, or deleting, or changing other elements of the master plan. I do think that we need to think a little bit more carefully about the public process that goes into any modification to the plan.
Mr. Stutzman?
Yeah.
Please come to the microphone.
I guess I would just add that I understand the board's concern about any sort of confusion in the interface between these two documents, and when you say by reference, what exactly does that mean? And I would point out that firstly, the master plan influenced the housing production plan, and much of the strategies came from the housing chapter in the master plan, so I might just recommend if you're looking for a mechanism to reference the plan, you take the relevant strategies laid out in the existing master plan housing chapter, because they're duplicated in the housing production plan in many instances, and say for additional information, see the relevant chapter of the housing production plan. And another way that it could be confusing to reference it wholesale is that we have a data part of it and a strategy part, so which, you know, I think to get the fresh data in there is really vital, but I can see there being some confusion about which strategy takes precedence, and I think what I just laid out would be one way to incorporate it cleanly.
Thank you. Ms. Brestrop?
I was just going to suggest putting this on an agenda for a future meeting, and perhaps you would all like an opportunity to go and look at the housing chapter of the master plan and think about how this housing production plan fits with that, and then you'd be more comfortable having this discussion at that future time.
Thank you. Mr. Crowner?
Based on the comments of Mr. O'Keefe and Ms. Brestrop, I'd like to withdraw the motion and then change it to ask that we put it on a future agenda.
Your withdrawal's accepted. I suggest that we do just that.
May I make a procedural point? This plan has its own general laws procedure for getting approval from the planning board and the select board, and then, as you mentioned earlier, being afforded to the state for its approval. It has its own procedural framework for existing as a separate entity, just as the master plan had its own procedural framework under the laws of the Commonwealth, so in that way, they are somewhat distinct. But thank you very much, Mr. Crowner.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I think we're gonna move on. Thanks very much to Mr. Stutzman and Mr. Horne for coming in tonight, and Ms. Perro for commenting, and thanks to everybody on the board for your active participation. This is an extremely important topic, and I'm really happy that it's happening. The next item, I'm gonna put off signing our decision on the, maybe we can sign the decision on the Universal List Society Building while we hear the sign review, so we can-
Can I pass around the minutes as well?
Yep, which I will sign. So the next item on the agenda is the sign review, SPR 2005 00001, Amherst Big Y Shopping Center, 175 University Drive. This is a review of proposed signs for Wings Over Amherst. Yes, sir, please come up to the microphone, and we have your, we have your pictures here of what you're proposing to do. Just introduce yourself and give us a very quick summary, if you would be so kind.
My name is Harold Tramazo from Wings Over Amherst. Wings Over Amherst exists at the back door of the Hanger Pub and Grill and has for 14 years. All we're trying to do is separate the delivery and pickup portion of our business and move it a hundred yards up the road and to the Big Y Plaza.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tramazo, and you're proposing to put up signs. There's a sign on the large street sign for the Big Y Plaza, and also one, a banner-type sign painted, is it painted onto the?
It's backlit.
A backlit sign? Right next, it's, this is adjacent to the Big Y there?
It's formerly the Quiznos, so it's three doors over from the Big Y.
Do you want to take a minute to plug your product while we're looking at your pictures?
No samples, sorry.
No samples?
I have nothing to, it alleviates a lot of the parking that upsets people around the hangar. It, I think it'll invite new customers that don't know- the hangar. It, I think it'll invite new customers that don't necessarily want to walk into the hangar and pick up food to take home. That's really what motivated this. Nothing, nothing crazy, nothing.
I see. Great. Was there any questions from the board? All right. Did I hear you say something? Go ahead.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve this sign plan in a second. Mr. Schreiber moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Carson seconded. All right, all in favor? That's unanimous. Best of luck to you. Thank you so much for coming in.
Have a good night.
Thanks for waiting.
Thank you.
And you're right, I'll be more likely to come in if I don't have to go into the hangar. Let's see, we next have, I believe, Mr. Mooreing here to talk about our roadway acceptance. This is a recommendation, potential recommendation on the select board on the acceptance of alteration of layouts of Bay Road, West Bay Road, and West Street. Mr. Mooreing, welcome.
Good evening. So, what we're doing is the final step for Atkins Corner Project. We've talked about it for years and years and years, so we're actually at the end of the project. The actual official end date of construction is July 12th or 16th, it's one of those two days, so the project will completely be done then. The one thing we need to do is tie up the loose ends with paperwork, and the biggest piece of paperwork to tie up is actually accepting the new layout and getting rid of the old layout. So, in your package, you have the same drawings that you're on the board here. The, in your drawings, the pink is what we're giving away, which was agreed to in the donation documents with the butters, and the green is the new layout that we're taking. So, that's what it is. There's a, the service road which loops around Atkins is also included in this taking. That's the new, two new public ways, and that's roughly it, if you have any questions.
So, you need from us what you're-
The select board has to give an opinion of acceptance according to the town council.
So, this is, yes, Mr. Tucker?
The planning board in its role ordinarily in the creation of roads through subdivisions takes on some role in advising the select board in this process of accepting a new layout, and so they're soliciting your recommendations.
If we don't accept it, will they change it?
Go ahead and go there.
If you have a big checkbook, yes. If we change anything with this project in the next five years, we have to pay the state and the federal government back 100% of what they paid into the project, so you would have to pay that, and then you could pay for any changes you want to do.
I see. So, this is sort of a formality?
Yes, it's just a paperwork tie-up of the loose ends.
All right, well, I don't want to keep you here any longer than we have to. Was there anything from the board on this? Then I guess we have a motion to accept the alteration of layouts of Bay Road, West Bay Road, and West Street in accordance with the plans presented by Mr. Mooreing.
I believe the motion is to make that recommendation to the select board, is it not? Are we accepting it ourselves?
Yes, no, you're right. We're recommending to the select board that they accept it. Thank you.
So moved.
That's why they don't let the chair make motions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Krueger?
I'd just say, I was down there today, right around rush hour, around 5:30, and I went through the two roundabouts. I went into the Atkins lot. I was looking at the new road. I was taking some photographs for one of our presentations.